Everybody's got the minutes. Do I hear a motion to approve? Motion to approve the minutes. We have a second.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Approval of claims. You had a chance to review the claims.
I'll make a motion to approve as presented.
We have a second.
I'll second.
We have a first and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, motion carries, thank you. We have, only have one thing on the agenda. We have Dustin Schmidt with, he is on our Board of Public Works as well as on our Parks Board, has a welding business and there were, we may seek some work to be done through him. We've got a shortage of welders right now in the Honeyburg area. But prior to that, we did, we did ask him to submit a conflict of interest form as well as we asked the Park Board to approve that and present at the Park Boards in a minute. It's here today, not necessarily for approval of the conflict of interest, but just as a, have it in the minutes that it has been presented to the board that he presides over.
No action needed?
No, I just need, need you to receive it in the minutes that you've received it. The mayor's, as the appointing authority, has approved it and that would enable the city entered into contracts with him and there'd be no conflict of interest.
And I also have to take it to the State Board of Accounts and the Park Board.
I think you do if, if you enter into a contract with him, but right now there's none. I mean, but before a contract is actually entered into, or when it's entered into, it has to be recorded with the State Board of Accounts.
Will they have to do it for every contract?
Uh, yeah, technically.
Yeah, if it did, probably just day-to-day work he wouldn't have to. It's just if he does it be in the contract?
No, it's, it's for any, any, it's for any, any contract that he, any work that we'd pay him for. So it might not be a bad idea to go ahead and pre-apply it.
Some people do it in advance of their contracts, I mean, at other places.
For maintenance work or whatever.
Yeah, I don't know how, how frequent he'd be using Mr. Schmidt's business, but if you think it might be on multiple occasions, then yeah, maybe you should pre-apply it.
Yeah, I've talked to the Parks Department and some of the other departments. They do have frequent needs for a welder and they've lost use of the welder here locally and so they probably will be using it for small projects.
Well, he's more than qualified, that's not the problem.
We, we're gonna have this under Citizens Items, however, I know that we have Malia that may have to leave early today. We have two members, if it's a kinda come out of order, if you don't mind, today, that are here for the Mayor's Youth Council. They have a project that they're going to do. I know I said you, probably surprised you here by putting you at the beginning, but are you, who's, we have Ruth or Malia, do either of you have something you want to present?
Oh, sure. I, you want me to go over there?
Sure.
Okay.
Just introduce yourselves and talk about your project.
Alright, my name is Ruth Shear. I'm a senior at Southridge High School and I'm President of the Mayor's Youth Council and...
I'm Leah, do you have any questions? You've talked to me before.
Leah's a regular attendant to the council meetings and reports back to the youth council on activities here.
So basically, one of the things, one of the projects that we've been working on the past few years as the youth council is we've had that land donated on Veterans Parkway a couple of years ago and it was kind of given over to us to decide what we wanted to do on it. So we thought a proper use of it would be to turn it into a community garden. It's a great location next to Hunter's Crossing and all of those houses over there, so we want to, currently plans, there is a parking lot, a gravel parking lot there, and we're putting a 50 by 50 feet community garden right next to it, it would be fenced in. Fence is already donated, but now we're gonna be needing the tools to actually, you know, put this community garden, make it, you know, functioning and running. So we're basically asking the community members if they could donate this weekend on Saturday, March 2nd and 3rd, and we will be needing grates, shovels, trowels, watering cans, gardening gloves, printing chairs, wheelbarrows, wheelbarrows and spades. And we have a few different churches, as you can see on the list, that will have a bin there accepting donations as well as in front of the City Hall. And basically, community members can come, drop off any gardening supplies they might want to donate. And having donations will allow us to have a more of a community bin available at the park that anyone can use the supplies versus having more of a bring your own or a locked shed versus this is gonna allow, you know, anyone to use the supplies and not, you know, need that. But we're planning on having eight beds, four by 20 feet approximately, built out of cinder blocks because the nice thing about that is that there's the little holes in the cinder blocks that you can put herbs and whatnot in, as well as it does not deteriorate compared to wood. So that's kind of in the plans right now and as a council, we're looking at construction during our spring break, which is the last week of March. And I'm sure if we end up coming with some dates, that community members would be able to come out and help construct the actual garden beds. But currently, this is just what we're asking of the community. So I know it's been posted on several social media pages, but we're just asking that you spread the word and if there's any people interested in donating larger items such as benches or sheds, we will definitely, you know, be willing to take that. So I have an email at the bottom of the page if anyone needs contact information about donating a larger item.
We will have a bin set up in front of the garage back here, front of the transit garage in that area that'll allow people to safely get off the street. Won't be directly in front of City Hall, so to speak, but it'll be out there.
Good. And yeah, this will just be, I think, something that I know a lot of community members have shown interest in, so it'd just be a place for both youth and adults to come and try gardening or maybe if they don't have the space in their own lawns, they can do it there.
So, will this be like a rented, like where they will rent plots or you just go and you kind of stake your claim and then you garden those areas or how, how will it be divided up?
We're thinking about just having like a stake your claim. That way, that kind of removes like our little men from needing a point of contact to rent out a space. This would be like a free-for-all. You know, we've thought about putting up stakes with kind of like outlines, you know, like I'm sure you guys have seen yarn that's placed on top of the beds that kind of separate plots and that way someone can know, okay, I'll try to stick to my area of the plot. But that's just kind of about having running ideas because we're trying to make this more of a self-sustained area and, you know, if we wanna plan community, community days where community members can just come out and, you know, do whatever they want, but, you know, we're trying to make this a self-sustaining project.
There is a master plan for the entire area, so I think, you know, future there'll be butterfly gardens and other parking areas that'll be maintained and our street department will be leveling off of that area here pretty soon. As soon as the, it gets dry enough and nice enough that we can make that happen, so.
We're trying to make it so as future Mayor's Youth Council members can add on to it, so it's not just a one and done.
Yeah, like adding wildflower across like the hill and putting a little walking trail or, you know, having trees put up around the perimeter so it blocks any view of the surrounding houses.
Okay.
Thank you.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you, ladies.
We have Energy Superintendent John Roots-Bolton? I think he has.
Start off with the gas pump. Install two new services this month. Two applications on file. And you can see in the picture I sent to the council, when we put a new service in on First Street, we dug down to the four-inch main to put a new tap on. Not only did we dig up the old tap from a house from probably 40 years ago, there was a repair clamp right beside it and that is a bolt-on repair clamp, which is now a federal regulations considered a temporary repair clamp. Same time we ran across one of them while we installed one, it got replaced within a year. Then you gotta leak survey it every month, documentation. So we had to, well, a line stopper on each end of the four-inch, cut a two-foot section of the main out, weld it back in, and then we put the new tap on. Took a little extra time, a little extra money, but we didn't have a choice, we had to get it switched out, so.
Between Washington and?
Down on First Street to New.
New.
Between, what, Washington and Oregon.
Oregon. That new, that new construction there?
Yes.
You'd say it's, no bolt-ons, probably been there 40, 50 years.
Yeah.
Due to new regulations, it's just considered temporary now, so we haven't cut it out. Then the crews did change out 11 meters with the new census meters, changed out 95 smart points, as you can see, we're right around, right now we're about 2,200. Currently, we're like 3,845, so we're getting near two-thirds, changed out. And Boonville, we sent another 180 of the old Itron modules to them, taking all we can give them. I can say this is what we sold each of them for. And here to date, that's the total we've received from Boonville so far for the old modules. I know for Pam and I know the new mayor, you know, with the smart points, you kind of know what we're talking about.
I think, cause it, that helps with whenever you guys, not have to have like a meter reader or something, but yeah.
Sure.
That would be great.
Oh, perfect, perfect.
This is a smart point. It goes on the meter. This is a register. This is what we take off, is the Itron. It's when the, they can go by with a handheld and they can read it from the truck or what have you. This goes to the cloud.
Okay.
So we don't have to send anybody out to read it. As you can see, you can pop this off, I'll pass it around. They got a battery in them, a little computer board, and they're all in a gel. So this is what they're getting for 20 bucks. So you can see they're kinda weathered.
Yeah.
And that's the new smart point.
What do those things cost new?
Which one?
That get your hand.
About a hundred dollars. And supposed to be good for 20 years. But Boonville has this and they have a lot of them, they're going out each month, they've had them for quite a while, and I'll change them over to the smart points yet.
They're trying to hold, hold their own until they get there.
Yeah.
Good deal.
Do what it looks like inside.
Oh, jeez. That's our, that's our mouse.
Get a little bit wetter.
Gotcha. Just sitting like crazy.
Inside comparable to that?
Yes.
Is there any way to hook this up backwards?
We just kinda take the register out of that one and put it into the...
We are live.
We're live. Interesting. Okay.
Man, was that much?
So then going to landfill.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I'm sure they really appreciate it, too, that...
They get a few more years out of it before they can get themselves up to the next level.
Thank you, bringing that.
Technically, you can't take no landfill, good electronics.
Nope, can't do that anymore now, you gotta pay to get rid of them, so.
It wasn't a battery in it, too, it looks like. Yeah, so.
Well, good work finding that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And the other part of the crew, they've been inspecting inline service valves and critical valves, proper operations and make sure not to fill up the debris in case we gotta shut them off in emergency. They'll have to dig debris out and try to find it, the cap turned off, we've been working on that. Should do it for the gas. Any questions? Moving on to the electric. We put three new services in. And we replaced an old primary pole that feeds St. Henry's complex, the church, the maintenance building, the whole deal, the poles on our Third Street. It's in the mid 80s and get it rotten at the bottom, so we did have to schedule an outage with them and we had to get that replaced, which went off real good. And then just south of the airport on County Road 200, we replaced a, which I do have a picture, replaced it with one of our ductile iron poles, deemed it a critical pole, it's got re-closers on it and that feeds pretty well the St. Henry area. So we had to take the switches down, replace the pole, plus it's dead ended right there, so took a little extra work to get that done. The re-closers, what they do, if there's a animal on line or a line comes down St. Henry, it will kick the circuit out right there before it goes back into town and it will reset itself three times before it kicks out and stays out, so if you have a limb hit the line and bounce off, it'll reset. Like you may see the lights flash just for an instant, come back on. This one likely had a re-closer kicked it, so we didn't have to send trucks out. So it's kind of a neat system there.
Is that when I lose all the data that I'm working on on my laptop?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So you'll see three flashes, then it goes out, then there's a main problem, but it's just a hit, it should kick everything back on. And it did, set two poles, it's a three-phase setting at the tech building in Southridge. I think they got some of the tech equipment out there, where they built a setting for it.
Yeah, if you're unaware, both Toyota and OFS have tech areas out there where they do simulation of their training early people to get ready for jobs in those areas.
They got, I guess, some three-phase equipment donated to them and similar to that, so they built this ceiling and while we were out there, we set a couple of new poles. Then the crews were doing audits of our, all of our electric poles, all the communication lines, fiber lines going on, we really thought it was necessary, we need to audit the poles, see what all kinds of communication lines on there. But once a year, we do bill these companies for pole contacts, so we want a good accurate count and we wanna have proof, cause our poles are now numbered, so then we'll go, we got a spreadsheet, so we can just go on our GIS, hit a spectrum column, show all the poles and the spectrum line is on, so if they have any questions, we can say, hey, here's the poles, numbers, that's what your lines are on, so kinda have something to back up. And that's gonna take a while, we got over 3,600 poles, we can go to each pole, try to identify all the communication lines on. And then we did replace the batteries in our central sub. We had them ordered back in June, they came in like last month, so we shut the central sub down, changed all the batteries out, took the batteries over to the recycle center. In the quote, it was quoted like $900 to send it back to where we got them, so we gotta hold up solid waste over there, so they took them for nothing, so it saves like $900 on our bill.
Yep.
And we got that all back on, running good. Any questions on the electric?
Very good.
Very good.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Water Superintendent Jerry Austin.
Good evening.
Good evening.
We'll jump into distribution. We, the street department's been working on a new sidewalk project on Eighth Street. We had five water meters that were getting up in the middle of their sidewalks, so we went out and relocated those water meters to keep them from becoming tripping hazards. We had a, repaired a water main break in First Street and Main, just on the south side of More for Less. And then we had a customer, south side of town here, that's using more water for their horses, so we went out there and installed a sewer deduct meter for them, just allows them, since their water usage is so much more, they're able to deduct that sewer charge off their water price. There's, there's a lot that goes into that as far as how many cubic feet of water a month they have to use and things like that, so it's just for the, usually the high-use customers. The city, years ago, created, they adopted a summer sewer program, so they kinda went away from sewer deduct meters for residential homes, so every summer, the, the whole community gets a discount on their sewer, so that's why, that's why these sewer deduct meters aren't very common, mainly commercial buildings and large water uses.
So in order to be eligible for what he's talking about, the customer has to be able to prove that the water he uses cannot get into the sanitary sewer system and he has to use at least, I think it's 7,500 cubic feet a month on average, and if that's the case, then he can, he can install a meter to, to measure how much water is going to that particular use and deduct that from his total water use and that is the amount that he pays sewer on. Of course, he pays for all the water he uses, but he pays sewer on a reduced amount, only the amount that can get into the sewer.
Yeah.
And we do this, something similar to that, though, for all customers in the summertime. We, we say your sewer bill will never be more than, or your, your water usage, your sewer, that, that your sewer is based on will never be more than 125% of your wintertime average. So that, that encourages people to water gardens and wash cars and whatever, and that, that water does not get into the sewer system. But I did have a question, I, I assume that installing that deduct meter is at his cost?
Yes, that is at his cost. He does get a bill for the meter, for the radio and all the material and everything We, we did have a water main break on Highway 231 in front of the Fairmount Cemetery. I did include a couple pictures of that, just so it happened to be right on the road edge and shared a picture of the water actually coming out of the, out of the ground that a resident sent in and then a picture of the hole that was actually in the side of the water main.
Wow, it looks like a tiny one. It looks like a tiny one.
Yeah. Yeah. That's a...
It's like a geyser.
Right. Yeah, it's, the water main looks to be in really good shape there and for that to be a perfectly, perfectly round hole, it almost makes me believe there used to be like a service there, a corbe stop.
Oh.
That had blown out. Usually, any time a water main breaks, it's a 360 crack or a large chunk of main that comes out very rigid, not something that's perfectly circular like that.
Interesting.
And from there, we, we did haul our sludge from our drying beds to the wastewater facility. I believe we might have spoke about that last month as well. We got all that finished up and cleaned up and then we, the other picture there that I included back, way back when, when water was the first of thing in Honeyburg, bubble water, they used curb stop valves. They usually set at the road edge, they had a riser on them and that's how you shut the water off to the homes. Since then, the city has got away from those and went to a valve in the meter pit. A lot easier to find, the curb stop boxes usually get full of dirt and debris, so whenever they retired a lot of those boxes, they pulled the valve, they pulled the boxes, left the valves and hoped nothing would happen with them. We do occasionally come across these where the valve has, has failed and, and does leak, so when we find those, we cut them out, replace them with, with new pipe and get them all plumbed back together. And then we did have another water main break on Highway 231, across from the old Tasty Freeze there at Fairmount Cemetery, last, this past month as well. And then, other than that, we've been back to our lead and copper, pot holy, patching and dirt work. We're trying to stay up with that. Glenn Kissling gave us a great product to be able to go back into the road, so we're, we're able to patch them as we go now versus putting plywood plates, patches over them or cones until we get to that point. So we, we've been fortunate enough to be able to repair those as we go instead of leaving them until we get a large amount to be able to get a trailer load of asphalt in. Other than that, that's it for distribution. The filter plant is running as it should and our metering system, this Monday, we finally started, I don't have it on here, I did this before Monday, but we've finally started receiving our large diameter meters. So we, all of our residential meters have been replaced, anything, our commercial meters up to an inch size have been replaced and then once all those were done, then we'll start on our commercial meters or large diameter meters, anything inch and a half and above. So we, the guys did get two of those installed since Monday. That'll be kind of a slow process, we have to schedule with companies to make sure we can have their water off, they, they take a lot longer to, to remove and install, so we'll, we have so much process to get those done, but we will get those completed as well. Other than that, that's all I have.
So will this system be like the gas system where everything is kind of in the cloud and computerized?
Yeah. We don't, I don't, I wanna say we've got roughly our water, I know, I know they read St. Henry water meters for wastewater, but our water meters, the last time we looked, we've got 62, is all John's guys read as far as water goes. The rest of it's been replaced and they read the RMI system and so hopefully, the last, the last amount ever these commercial meters, so once we get these put in, he won't have to mess with someone.
Well, that's, and it's nice for the customers, too, that leak, cause that happened at our house where we had a leak and we had no idea, so.
Definitely.
I appreciate that, yeah.
History, history of those meters, Steve and I have been on, as long as we've been on, every year, meters have been a topic of discussion.
Too much. Meters, meters, meters.
We've hopefully solved our meter discussion.
So it's, the system had its hiccups at first and we, the last probably three or four years, it's been great. It's, the, the billing department, they don't, they don't seem to mind it anymore. We've, we've got the new dusted off of it and it seems like it's working well, so hopefully, hopefully if we continue on, it's only gonna get better.
I do think the technology is quite, quite impressive. I know they used to have to keep notes on meters and, and things and this house, this house has unusually high usage or whatever. Now it's electronic, they can just look at it and, and see if there's something going on that does all, does all the data for them, so.
Yeah.
And your meters are, your meters are the, the worst, I guess, to, to read.
They are. They're always underwater or they're always...
Buried, whatever, they're underwater, car parked on top of them, whatever.
We get that a lot, too.
Yeah. John's, his oughta go well. You know, his are on the side of the house.
There goes that, John. But they, they are a great thing. I know Pam and Neil, you guys, I haven't been around since the beginning, like the water meter, the gas, electric, the same way, they're smart meters, they learn the way to use water. Unfortunately, it is a, it is a computer program and algorithm, so it doesn't catch them all, but we go out every day, whenever our meter tech starts his day, that's the first thing he does. These meters, we can look at your water usage every hour of the day. They throw out leak alarms, so whenever he gets those, it'd be for continuous use, any more than four hours at a time, so, or any abnormal water usage. When I say they learn your water usage, they, they learn when your peak water usage is and when your low water usage is and it'll throw out alarms to that as well. And then his first part of his day, he's looking at that, hanging door tags, letting you know, hey, you got a potential water leak. And unfortunately, the city, that's as far as we go with that, our, our responsibility stops at the meter, so that, that door hanger is just to let people know that they've got something, they can either look for it themselves or, you know, hire a plumber to, to take care of that, but we really, it's, it's been a great tool to be able to cut down on the high water bills for our customers, instead of waiting till the end of the next month to find out that you had a leak, you're finding out.
Will the electric be the same way? Do you think that they'll be have, will it learn your electric usage and suddenly warn you that, man, you're really using a lot of electricity or something?
We can hit a chart and see when the use goes up, if we have a question, we can print off a graph and say, here, is when your use went up and stayed high.
Yeah.
If you have a emergency heater, when your furnace stick on.
I've got a, I've got a resident right now that came to me with that, that suddenly my electric bill went high and it turns out they got a heat pump and for some reason their emergency heat is on all, every time it kicks on, the emergency heat kicks on and stays on, where it used to, it shouldn't do that, you know, if it's working properly, so.
With the old meters right now, is it?
We don't know.
It's what the read is, so. Going forward with the new meter, we'll go short the chart, print off the chart, they have this exact time it went in. hit this exact time it went up and stayed up, or, you know, it gives a history, just like the water meters, it's gonna be a great asset.
Yeah. It's good data, it really is.
It's the future. We've arrived, guys, we've arrived.
Humburg's there, huh?
Yeah, we are. That's how my kids are, water usage is up, and when you get home. Thank you.
Thank you guys.
Thanks. Thank you. So the Attorney Phil Snyder.
I have nothing to say.
Uh, Clerk Treasure Thompson, you'd have to look.
I got a lot.
Oh, my.
Uh, every, uh, every year, budget time, we, we budget a little, uh, some funds to be transferred from the, uh, cash reserve fund of the, uh, electric, gas and, and water utilities into the general fund, and, uh, what this resolution does is, is authorize me to do that for twenty-three. We've already done it into the budget, uh, the budget was set with that in there, so just need a.
Approval.
Approval, yeah, approval and a number, right?
Resolution.
Resolution number, yes.
Two, two thousand twenty-four zero four.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution Two Thousand Twenty Four Zero Four.
Any second, Dan.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, and then, uh, every year we do a, uh, with, with the budget, they are just estimates. Uh, I'm, this ordinance would allow me to move, uh, money from one major budget category to another, except from personal services into supplies or, or other services, other, uh, services into capital or whatever. Uh, and then at the end of the year, I give you a, uh, summary of what the, the items have been moved.
Yeah, it doesn't change the total budget, just let you move.
We would never go over the total budget.
It just moves, moves part, moves money within the budget.
Right.
And this is a annual event on.
Yeah, we do this every year, yes.
Yeah. And that would be Two Thousand Twenty Five Zero Five.
Twenty Four Zero Five.
Two Thousand Twenty Four Zero Five.
There you go.
He's moved the whole year on it.
Yeah.
So here, motion to approve, uh, ordinance number Two Zero Two Four.
So we have to introduce, I guess.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Motion introduced.
Okay, thank you.
I'll second it.
All those in, uh, favor?
Aye.
Uh, any opposed?
Suspend.
Motion to suspend the rules?
Yep. Make that motion to suspend the rules, or Steve did, I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Ordinance number Two Zero Two Four Dash Zero Five.
Make a motion to approve Two Zero Two Four Dash Zero Five.
Any second, Dan.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Boltie.
Aye.
Kissling.
Aye.
Uh, bounds where?
Aye.
McFerrin.
Aye.
Four eyes, one absent.
All right. Motion carries.
We are adopted.
We have the, uh, so.
And, uh, the other, uh, I said I give you a, a copy of something for, for the prior year about, while I had adjustments we had to make, uh, that's what you have here, an adjustment to, uh, Two Thousand Twenty Three Dash Sixteen, that ordinance, uh, that you can see there. We just moved, moved a few dollars, uh, between those two, between the major budget classifications. And that doesn't really, I just wanted to present that to you, uh, on a yearly basis. Um, the other, the Two Thousand Twenty Three financial statements, there are several, but I, I want you to have, uh, you already have the utilities, uh, financial statements, but what I printed off, uh, gave you were the, uh, non-utility revenue and expense categories for all the non-ut, or all the non-utility funds, uh, the balance sheets for all the non-utility funds, uh, cash summary for all funds, and, uh, again, if you go through those and have any questions, just give me a call. Cause they're quite voluminous.
Yeah.
I did, I did submit the, uh, annual report, uh, through the Gateway system, uh, this last week, so that is done.
That's, that's available to the general public to look at.
That is.
Can access Gateway, yeah.
And has a lot of these same things that I did.
Right.
Have given you.
It's just a summary of what happened for the Twenty Twenty Three and all, all accounts, so.
And that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
You can't sleep at night, you can read that. It's page after page after page of numbers.
I'm, I'm a bit of a nerd, I'll read most of it, probably. Unfortunately, I know what. Uh, any, any other items? Any council items?
I have one question. I know we go into the summer sewer rates, and I know it starts on, I think it's May first, is that correct?
I'm not sure, but, yeah, sometimes it's May or June, I think it's June, but I could.
And I brought this question up years ago, and I forgot what, what we do, is like, what if we wanna add on August to it, because it seems like the driest month of all the months is August, and that's when a lot of people quit.
Would you just, we'd amend the ordinance to include that, to include that. I think it goes through, I'm, I'm.
Pretty sure it does. It's only three months, isn't it?
When does it start?
I think it's, I think it's more than that.
So when does it start?
I think it starts in June and it goes through August, uh, but if you're, if you're, if your bill is an August, September read, it includes that, August, September period, cause I know that's happened to me before filling my swimming pool.
As I said, it should be earlier in the spring, too, cause pools are gonna be filled up earlier.
Yeah.
But it is what it is.
Okay, that was just a question I had.
I'll get that number for you, Tim.
Yep. It says four, I'm going, four months.
Yeah, so it's, it must be May through, uh, May, July, August, May through August.
Pretty sure.
That would make sense.
Okay, very well.
Thank, thank you. Any other council items?
Ordinance.
Uh, we have any citizens items? I think we have a couple citizens here, but, Sydney.
Dan's not here.
Uh, note, I'll entertain a motion to.
Motion to adjourn.
Before, before we do that, uh, we have sent out a reminder if we are in fact gonna do photos next meeting.
Yeah, photos. We're good.
We're set up, and we do photos.
Yeah, we're set up to do photos next meeting, we just, uh, wanna verify we don't have any conflicts, uh, we are a little flexible on that, uh, I know that, uh, council, we may have one council member that, that will have to do some schedule changes in order to make that happen, but that is on the twelfth, I'll let you know whether it's prior to or preceding the meeting.
Okay.
Okay?
Just, yeah.